I want to go ahead and call this city council meeting to where?
6:00 p.m.
Mr. Soto, you're listening to the place. I'm going to be just to what I think of the United States of America. Typically, we're all just stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Soto.
May your family start his form?
Yes.
Diablo Madrid?
Here.
Mary Garcia, welcome to the meeting at 6:01. Jesse Gander, welcome to the meeting at 6:01. Mary Garcia? Doye Rodriguez?
Here.
Jesse Gander?
Here.
Mayor, we have form. Now moving on to public comment.
Before we move into public comment, there's a lot of these people that came on the issue about Mr. Soto, about that, about permits. Can you, I don't think, did anybody sign up for it from there? I think what the conversation that we had, we're not going to raise the permits, right?
The current law, the current law that we have had is in effect.
Okay.
It's $25.
Okay. Please answer.
Yeah. I'll explain it after. Los que están aquí ahorita para los de los permisos. La ordenancia que hay ahorita está buena, no les vamos a subir los permisos. Se los vamos a dejar a los que se toman. Ese es el hueco del cochillo, esto es la ordenancia, la administración, este, so... Los que vinieran a eso, este, no van a decir que no se los van a subir. Se va a quedar igual. So, si uno de ustedes se... ...se añeaba para hablar para eso, pues ya...
Bienvenidos, bienvenidos, pueden hablar ustedes mismos.
Come, come, ya, to see each other.
No, no más eso que ese era un error de planning and zoning. Y hace una noticia que el Eje estaba, Story está efectivo. Y si va mañana, se va a sumar 25 por años, so, so todo se arregló. Si te le hacen hacer algo a mi consiguió. Hey, yo.
Pues a las personas que han pagado la cantidad de 600, 720 dólares, se le regresará el dinero que excedente de los 25.
El sábado y el día de ayer ha sido, si les comunicé que todo iba a arreglar, que era una, oh, si vamos a arreglarlo, entonces ya está, no quisiste preocuparse por eso.
Go ahead, Mr. Julio.
Moving on to public comment. Our first speaker, first person is Mr. Ralph Durán. Mr. Durán, you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, about a month ago, I wrote a letter to you as mayor of the city of Socorro, complaining about harassment. I have yet to receive a reply. You were elected to represent the people of Socorro. You repeatedly told us that you have no vote. But you have a voice, and that voice, it better be started to be heard. We've come to many, many meetings, and you're supposed to be the leader of our city, not the doormat of city council. You're up for recall. If you don't start living up to the job that you have been elected to, there could be some consequences. You need to become the leader of our city. You need to speak up for people that have no voice. You need to speak up when you see something that is not right. You need to start being the voice of the people of Socorro. A lot of us, I complain, I write a letter, I get no answer. We need to start having answers. This is something that's been going on for a long time now. I have no representation in the city. You are the only one who has lent an ear. Now it's time to, you start becoming the voice of that ear. And the people of Socorro deserve it. We voted, they voted, and they elected you. Now it's time for you to live up to that promise that you made to them to be our leader. Thank you.
Moving on, our next speaker is Ms. Suki Ramos. Ramos, you have three minutes.
And our council, I just wanted to ask a quick question, or you also well ask, but in a way I know you cannot respond to me. But I think that in all fairness, we have a camera facing our community. Shouldn't it be facing the council like it is on all other city council meetings? Also, I would like to note that if that camera belongs to the city, why is our representative from district four taking it with him in his laptop bag or in his possession when he leaves this city council meeting? I believe that if it belongs to the city and we are the people that administration takes care of those minutes and taking care of being possession of that videotape, it should go directly to the person that is in charge of doing so. So, and if it does belong to our representative, then it should be on that corner alongside the other cameras that are, that have been designated for that specific area to be used, to put, set up your camera. So at this time, I would like to know, Mayor, that camera belongs to him or it belongs to the city?
I cannot answer that question, you know, I cannot answer your question. Sure.
Okay, also, okay. The past, well, the present HLC and had held a meeting not too long ago. Now, during that meeting, we were given new recommendation, they're saying we as an ad hoc committee to work, ordinance number 131. And I had been working with Texas Historical Commission, Derek Satchel, all through this time, we were told to do so, as you are aware, Mr. Wallace, and you have spoken with him during some of those times that I had actually been working with him on. I just wanted to know whether you had already received that talking that Mr. Vitoral had with Mr. Leoni. I think it's crucial and important that you receive that ordinance and approve it so that the HLC can continue conducting their normal business meetings. So, with that in mind, I please leave that in your hands, that it's important and it's crucial that you put that ordinance to work so that the HLC can continue working as crucial.
Our next speaker is Laura Miasen. Miasen, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here in regards to the rezoning, the proposed rezoning for the Nevada State's Lot, um, Lot 4, Lot 1. And I'm against this rezoning. We've already, we came about a month ago, and we, you know, spoke about what we felt was the adverse effect it would have on our community. But I would like to just let you know that it is, Alameda is a commercial area, and although our neighborhood chose not to become commercial, everything you see around the area is residential. If it was accepted, if the rezoning was accepted, we have no fire hydrants, we have no buffer zones, everything around the area are homes, and so I think that would also be a negative. It would have negative impact on our neighborhood and our community. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Noemi. I can't make out the last name.
Thank you.
Sorry, what is the last name?
My name is Sarah White.
Okay, sorry. Next speaker is Naomi Miasen.
Good afternoon. I also wanted to approach the matter of the rezoning of the same Lot 4, Lot 1, the Nevada State subdivision. Subdivision. I am also against this measure, and I really feel very strongly about this. I know that it was, the denial was committed by the planning department, and I'm here to reiterate that, to continue to stress how important it is to all of the neighbors in that area. We recognize that Alameda is a industrial front, but Alameda is commercial. However, as residents in that area, we all made the choice as individuals and as a collective also, as neighbors, that we made our, that area our residence, those are our homes. We grew up there, and so we take it very to heart that it is, we don't want to see that area change. We understand that there's a couple of commercial suburbs, there are some businesses, but we feel that the impact that this business would have right in the middle of Aurora Falls would be negative for all of our community would be negative because there's a small front to the street that has a high rent. And we've also seen, like previous history, that this neighbor of ours, he doesn't show a lot of respect for us. While in the C1 zoning, we have admittedly what get ready to be crashing that lot. There was a buffer zone, so we just feel really strongly about maintaining that residential area.
Our next speaker is Emel Provencio. No, Emel Provencio. We have two more speakers whose names are, I can't just make out the names. They don't, I'm sorry, they don't state where they want to speak.
¿Quién más escribió para hablar? ¿Usted, ahorita o en una espacita?
No, igual que ellas.
Pase.
¿Qué es su nombre? José Cuña.
José.
Ah, José Cuña. Este, yo también estoy en desacuerdos de, de no va a querer poner comercial y apropiarse. Porque yo soy el vecino de, de seguida, y este, pues se presentan muchos casos de, de que, dice, por ejemplo, mi familia voy en muchas, 12 días, ¿verdad?, con esa persona. Que mete gente, no sé, vulgar, ¿verdad? Y este, pues, está muy pegado ahí a mi casa, y dice, voy en todo, este, pues, voy de esa forma.
We have, can anyone else, we have two more names added. Cannot make up.
¿Alguien más que se les escribió para hablar?
B.
¿Nadie? ¿Usted se les escribió para hablar?
Ya se me llevó la placa.
Right, Mayor. Moving on to the consent agenda. Item number five.
Item number five? Yeah, I know. In addition to this, and I want to know, Mr. Soto, about item number 10. If it is under the consent agenda, then to consent agenda number 10, I want to know where this property is.
Mayor, I make a motion to pull out consent agenda next in this order. Items 11, 10, 12, and 5. We have a motion on the floor, seconded by Doye Rodriguez. Diablo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. That was to pull out 11, 10, 12, and 5, correct? Okay. Mayor, may I make a motion? Are you remember the number 2, right? Yes. Item number 11, discussion and action on recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission on revotes rezoning of Lot 4, Lot 1, Behar State subdivision, city of Socorro, Texas, from C1 light commercial to number 10. No, no, we spent a lot of water, I put a lot of motion. Texas from C1 light commercial to C2 general commercial. Planning and zoning commission recommended denial of the rezoning because development in the area did not demonstrate change in neighborhood and because of adverse impact on adjoining residential properties. And Mayor, go ahead, Mr. Doye. Motion to deny the rezoning. We have a motion, and we have a second. Diablo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on, moving on to item number 10. Discussion.
Thank you.
To deny.
Thank you very much.
Item number 10, discussion and action on approval of proposed rezoning of track 17, lay Clark survey 298, city of Socorro, Texas, from unclassified zoning to M2 heavy industrial. Do you have a motion on the floor? The mayor has the question. Okay.
During mayor council, this is natural request for the proposed rezoning of the private 17, the park survey 298, city of Socorro, Texas, from unclassified zoning to M2 heavy industrial. The owner is BSI Plus LLC. The property located at 12,620 Gateway Boulevard is approximately 2.3 miles southeast of the intersection of Horizon Boulevard and ITM. The property has an approximate area of 8.2 acres. According to the file insurance rate maps, the reference property is described as Zone X. The existing zoning classification of the reference property is unclassified zoning. The proposed zoning classification is M2 heavy industrial. The current land use of the property is vacant land. The proposed land use is staging area for exports or a transfer station for traders and buses to be exported to Mexico. Adjacent land uses to north, south, east, and west unclassified zone. The planning zoning department has received the following documentation today. Request for rezoning application fees, property deed, title guarantee, and tax activity. The planning and zoning commission recommends to approve this request under N1 light industrial due to the fact the proposed activity falls into the permitted uses of the N1 classification, not under N2 heavy industrial.
And that was my, that was my question, is whether, because on M2, they can, they can pretty much use the property for whatever they want. Whether it would be a dismantling of cars, a recycling center, on an M2, pretty much they can use it for whatever. And, you know, we have already enough junkyards and scrap yards within the city. So, you know, if that's, if that's what they want to do, if they just want to move these vehicles across the river, well, why would they need an M2? It doesn't make any sense.
That is the recommendation we did, and that's the recommendation that fails from the planning zoning commission.
So, what they want to do, which is the transporting, staging area, transport buses and traders, they threw that under M1 zone.
M1.
Not M2. So they don't have to have M2 do that export.
How many motions?
Motion to, why go with the light in the zone?
The M1.
Yes.
The M1. And I'll second the M1 zoning also.
We have a motion on the floor by Doye Rodriguez, seconded by Jesse Gander to approve the M1 zoning. Diablo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Moving on to item number 12, discussion and action on approval of proposed rezoning of track 15F, Block 10, Sobola Brand, city of Socorro, Texas, from unclassified zoning to M1 light industrial.
This is an approval request for the proposed rezoning of track 15F, Block 10, Sobola Brand, city of Socorro, Texas, from unclassified zoning to M1 light industrial. The owner is Akil Franco. The property located at Level 245 Alameda Avenue at approximately 1,050 feet south of the intersection of Alameda and Robin. The property has an approximate area of 0.44 acres. According to the file insurance rate map, the reference property is described as Zone X. The property was previously used as to run automotive and diesel. The original property owner ceased operation for more than six consecutive months losing the commercial legal nonconformity for grandfather status. The property had been sold, and the new owner wants to reopen the business to provide mechanic job service for automotive and heavy diesel equipment. The existing zoning classification of the reference property is unzoned, unclassified zone. The proposed zoning classification is M1 light industrial. The current land use of the property is empty land with two buildings previously used for mechanic job activities. The proposed land use is heavy mechanical job. According to our future land use map, the projected land use for this property is commercial. Adjacent land uses to the north, C1 light commercial, to south, M2 heavy industrial, to the east, M1 light industrial, to the west, A1 agricultural. The planning and zoning department has received the following documentation today. Request for rezoning application fees, property deed, title guarantee, and tax activity. The planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
I think this might fall over more to the master plan and where we're headed with that. I do find it interesting that our future land use map has this property projected as commercial, and they're trying to rezon it industrial. So it's, so even without the new master plan is coming out, it's already out of, out of the scene of what's the future lands for those properties on our deal, which are commercial and industrial. So I think, based on the grounds, maybe we should wait until we get the master plan out, see where exactly we're going to build these businesses. Make motion to deny.
Mr. Julio? Yes, before. Did you, did you say, like, you should recommend approval? What I do remember, Mr. Julio, the last property, it had all been used as a... You're correct. It had all been used as a mechanic shop. I don't know why he didn't want it as an M1, maybe C2 or something like that. He did have the cash up there, basically. You know, I haven't seen. It's been there for, what, 15, 40 years, it was not, is that what, 15, 40 years? It was sold. Yeah. Yeah.
Powerless, not because he was sold, because the cease of operation on the land, and they got the grandfather. And the decision for M1 is because of the size of the equipment to be, to be his.
I second the motion on the same grounds, that it's not time for that, nothing, we got the master plan in place, and we know where everything's going to go. Right now, we can't do that.
We have a motion on, we have a motion on the floor to deny by Jesse Gander, seconded by Diablo Madrid. Diablo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Motion is denied. Moving on to item number 5, approval of regular council minutes, meeting minutes of February 17, 2011, and special meeting minutes of February 22, 2011. We have a motion on the floor. A motion to approve by Mary Garcia, we have seconded, seconded by Doye Rodriguez. Diablo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia? Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number 6, discussion and action on awarding a contract for IT technology services.
Mayor, council, we would recommend you table this item for your regular meeting.
Motion to delete. We have a motion to delete. We have a second. Seconded by Doye Rodriguez. Diablo Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Item number 6 deleted from the agenda. Moving on to item number 8, no, I'm sorry, number 7. Discussion and action on appointment from District 3 for the Historical Landmark Commission. We have a speaker for this item.
Okay, go ahead.
Speaker is Ms. Suki Ramos.
Okay, I have a question for the council of the common front district, so I have three. Is Mr. Pico Luján our, our, our past commissioner still? Very likely, can he not come in or has he resigned?
No, she's not.
Yeah, so we have to give you a question.
Oh, she's, she's got me. Oh, there is, there is regular gentleman, just, she's got me, man.
Well, I'm asking her a question.
I'm just asking. We don't, we've never met that one. Serious, not even a regular?
I'd like to make my motion that if he is commissioner, okay. I just wanted to know whether, if he was still a commissioner, and I like to question whether that commission that I served with is still active or isn't gone. I have that question, and I need, Mayor, I need somebody to answer this.
Ms. Ramos, look, I want to be very frank with you. I thought that on regular agenda, yes, we could, we could engage with the public, but apparently, you know, it hasn't ever happened?
No, it didn't.
You're right. Okay, uh, Mr. Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on, Ms. Ramos, hold on. Chair, what are the rules on engagement on regular agenda?
As long as the item is on the agenda, it's within the discretion of the city council. It's a happy endeavor. It would be, it would be committed, but it would be within the discretion of the city council. The issue at the point, it's not committed when it's on the, when it's, when it's a new item that's brought up here in public comment, is that it's not listed on the agenda.
Here's your answer. Here's your answer, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to say that it's so important that you do, if the, even if the council that I serve with is no longer active, I think that you all that appoint with those persons, you have courtesy and professionalism. You do have an attorney that can write letters to these commissioners. Letting them know whether they are still on board and if they're not. You need to put the fact attached to that letter, why they were let go. If they're not, simply that, all I'm asking is for that, for to respect that commission that is in existence. To my knowledge, the charter calls for the commission, and nowhere does it say that when there's not an ordinance, that they will not be active any longer. And there is things, and if you do not, if you put this commission to become inactive and go away from that commission, then there's some legalities that probably will come out of this issue, because that is not correct. What you're doing, if you're appointing people, and there's still members in that commission that were not notified, that they're no longer there, then we need to do something about this. And Mayor, yes, we expect you to do something about this. You are a mayor, and you are my representative, supposedly. I expect you to respect those ethics, and that we voted you in, you said you were going to do everything in your power to represent us, and I'm asking you, please, make sure that things are done appropriately, ethically, that, and that you have respect of the people that you all appointed. Because very, it is very rude if they're being done away with and not even being notified. And to this point, that commission thinks they're still on board, because we were told during the last meeting by Mr. Leoni.
Ms. Ramos, your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos.
We have a motion for item number 7.
I'd like to make a motion. I would like to reappoint the champion of that act to the historical commission. And in the best interest of the commission, I would like to have Mr. Vitoral replaced by David Garcia.
Go ahead, Chicago.
I'll second it and reiterate that this commission is fully active. There's seven commissioners that are supposed to live our charter, and hopefully it'll finally get its feet off the ground, because I know it's been nagging for, for really years now.
For a few years, and I did want to address that.
I'll second it.
We have this appointment that I'm making, um, it's important, yeah, it has its benefits. It has to be looking forward. It's important that the board goes to...